Good morning, girls, and welcome to our online edition of Taking Back Your Life, a 40-day journey to thinking right so you can live right. You have joined online, our onsite group that is already meeting here at Green Neighbors. Girls, would you say hello, please?
Hello.
I hope you feel connected even through technology. We have prayed for you already today and asked the Lord to just connect our hearts even through this. And maybe you're sitting at home, hopefully in your warm pajamas or in your cozy chair and just listening to our study today, and I hope that you'll take this in that today will not only warm your heart, but it will also light your fire as we look through being proactive and moving forward in faith and some of the action steps that we have already worked through. We're going to add a third one today. So again, this is Taking Back Your Life. If you've not gotten the workbook, I encourage you to do that. And we are starting week two. So we did not meet last week for Thanksgiving. We took that week off, so you're really not hardly behind at all. So get that study and begin to work through the daily work. Today, I'm going to take a few minutes to recap and reinforce. We had a week in between some of our action steps and some of our main principles. We're going to focus on two main steps in this study, and they come from the title. So our action is going to be, take, this is our study, Take Back Your Life, and we're going to be focusing on these two action steps. Taking things back and thinking right. That's going to be like the banner over our life. That's going to be the main things that we're working on. So this is going to be the what. What we are doing, taking things back. On our first week, so that would have been not this last Tuesday, but Tuesday before, we talked about taking things back that we have lost, taking things back that we surrendered ground. Do you remember that study? We surrendered ground, maybe by default or maybe unintentionally, how the enemy just sinks in and he takes over, and it's kind of like a tactic of war. He just takes over that ground. So you have to go back and listen to that because we talk about how to take ground back that we have surrendered to the Lord, or maybe people back, or maybe disciplines. Maybe at one point, we spent time with the Lord and we spent time in prayer. And so let's take some time to think about that. Taking things back and thinking right. Now, on our first time when we met together, we gave two action steps on how to do that. So this is the what we are doing, taking things back and thinking right. This is what we are going to learn to do. We're going to develop the habit of doing that, okay? It's not enough to say, okay, that's what we're doing, that's what we're doing. You have to say how. How are we going to do that? Just like if you have some financial goals, I want to have $100,000 in the bank at the end of the year. That's an admirable goal. I love that. But in the meantime, you're going to put some steps in place on how you intend to acquire that. What are the things that you'll be doing? What are the things that you're going to stop doing? You following me? Same principle applied. This is the how. This is the what we're doing, and this is how. We talked about our first week, we're going to fix our eyes. And the second thing we were going to do is strip off sin and weight. Now, if you missed that, you need to go back because sin and weight are two different things. Two different things entirely, and you need to learn how to strip off the sin and weight. So you can view that video. So I'd love for you to take a few moments and go back and review that. So that's what we're going to be doing today. Now, we're going to add, we'll reinforce and bring that back to the forefront of our minds and of our actions. Now, today, we're going to add a third how. We're going to add a third action step. The third thing is this, that we're going to put under this banner. How are you going to take things back? How are you going to think right? You're going to fix your eyes? You're going to strip off sin and weight? And number three is you are going to follow directions. And you know who you are out there that do not follow directions. We're going to follow directions, and don't say to me, what does that even mean? What does that even mean? Stop, stop. It means exactly what it means in the regular world about following direction. And I'll be the first to tell you, I am one of the most directionally challenged people you will ever meet in your life. I don't know why, I don't know how it happened. I don't know, just they were teaching geography in the sixth grade or whatever, I was chasing boys, who knows? But I missed the whole thing. My husband is, you can drop that needle anywhere in the United States, and he automatically knows certain highways run east and west and certain highways. He can figure out how to get where he's going. You drop me anywhere in the United States, I will get to some chocolate and I will find a good Mexican restaurant. That's what I can do better. I could find some directions to those, too. But it is just the most bizarre thing. And today, we're going to get our directions out of Joshua. So turn in your Bibles, please. We're going to be in Joshua and in Isaiah. So Joshua, chapter one. And let's unpack this following direction. Spiritually speaking, it's going to be the same way that you follow other directions, navigation directions. While you're turning there, let me tell you this funny story. When I first moved to Dallas, Texas, from Shreveport, Louisiana, when I was staffed at Prestonwood, of course, Dallas, Texas is quite different than Shreveport, Louisiana, the traffic and the highways and all of that. And I had a speaking engagement in Denton, Texas. We lived in Plano. So that was back in the day before we had Siri and navigation on our phones. Do you remember what we would do to get our directions?
Get a map.
Math quest. Yeah, we'd go and get a math question. You'd have to print it off and take it with you. And so, no joke, my husband sent me down at the kitchen table, and I have to go to Denton, and he gets the directions, print it off, and he's trying to give them, you know, walk through them with me. Honey, now, you're going, when you see this, you're going to need to turn. And I'm like, give me the shape. I'm spiritual like that. I can't help it. I'm so spiritual. But I was like, read the directions. Just give them to me. And so, no joke, he gives me in a sealed envelope, the directions on how to get home. Because has anybody ever back in those days given you directions on how to get somewhere? And then they'd say, now, to get back?
Just go backwards.
Follow those backwards. Yeah, I might as well do brain surgery. I can't follow them forwards. How do you think I'm going to follow these directions backwards? Not happening. So he puts them in a sealed envelope so I don't get confused, and then I open that up when I get ready to move. So I go my way to Denton, and there's like four turns, and so I've got a long way to go. And so then, it's making sense to me. Now, I got this. I put the directions aside in the seat next to me. I got this. And so I did some things. I called and checked on a lady that had been released from the hospital, called my mother-in-law. Points in heaven for that right there. I was doing some other things. The next thing I know, this sign says exit to Oklahoma. So I pulled off, and I told John Mark, he's known as the two disciples. So I called the two disciples, and I'm like, you are not going to believe this. He sits by the phone when I leave because he knows I will be calling, that I'm lost. With the directions in my hand, I am lost. I said, honey, you have to help me. I'm lost. And he's like, do what? I said, where are you? What did the sign say? I said, that one says McDonald's, that one says Texaco. Can you get into some of those signs, please? He said, you're going to be late to this, or you're plugging them back in where I need to go. And while he's doing that, I had gone too far. When he was plugging that in, he asked me this question. He said, honey, how do you get lost every time with directions in your hand? I said, that ain't none of your business. And that question has stuck with me my entire life. Spiritually speaking, how do I get lost with the directions in my hand? Seriously, y'all, that day, was I doing things I should not have been doing? When I put the directions, was I doing things? I was doing good things. I wasn't doing bad things. But let me ask you, answer the question. How was it that I got lost that day? What happened?
You lost your focus.
I lost my focus. What else?
Not paying attention.
I wasn't paying attention. Exactly what else? I lost. Keep this in mind. We're going to flip all this to the spiritual side. I lost my focus. I was not paying attention.
Went the wrong way.
I went the wrong way. I stopped following directions, and I thought I could do it myself. That's exactly what happened. Now, I'm going to ask you another question. Be totally honest, at Girls Online, I want you to raise your hand wherever you are. Raise your hand if you've ever been in the men's restroom by mistake right now. We've got a room full of women, girls, online, so you know. I hope you're raising your hand, too. Let me ask us a question, please. How is it that we end up in the men's restroom staring at a journal? How does this happen? We're not what? We're not paying attention. Does the sign say ladies? Yes, it does. Does it have a skirt on it? Yes, it does. But what do we do? We barrel into the men's restroom. Y'all, we do this to the Lord all the time. Oh, I hear you. Okay, I got it from here. Okay, I know what I'm doing. Okay, I got it. I know what I'm doing. I got it from here. I know where this is going. I know this. And listen, here's what I've done, no joke. And it's usually when I'm in the men's restroom, more times than I care to tell you about. It is in an unfamiliar territory. It's in an unfamiliar place. It's places I have never been before. Would you attach this to the spiritual side of things? An unfamiliar territory. And here's what I do. I'm, huh, I come out, and then I blame it on somebody. Who put the women's restroom on the left inside? Everybody knows that the women's is the right inside. That's why we're to the right inside. It's somebody else's fault. Let's look in Joshua, and I'm going to show you how following directions is so important. Do you understand how we know how to follow directions? We just don't do it. Spiritually speaking, we have this word that tells us, do this, don't do this, hang around these people, don't hang around these people, spend your money this way, say your words this way, all of these things. The bottom line is, we don't do it. We got this. We think we know what we're doing. We think we know where this is going, and that's going to get us in trouble spiritually. The Lord's not going to keep doing this with us repeatedly. We've got to make some adjustments. He gives us the instruction on how to do that in Joshua, chapter one. For the sake of time, I'm not going to read all of chapter one, but what has happened is Joshua has now come into leadership. Moses is dead. And so the Lord is like, we're in a new day. And girls, today, this day, December the first, 2020, best year ever. Let's be positive, best year ever. Things have changed. Things have changed for Joshua. He's no longer following, he's leading. And the Lord has some instruction for him that we can apply to our life. So Moses is dead, Joshua is coming to leadership. Verse six says this. This is the instruction. I hope that you write in your Bible that it's like a textbook. I encourage you to circle your action words. It would benefit you if you would diagram some of these scriptures, just like you diagram sentences in English class. Look at, who's the verb? What's the action? What are the adjective? What's the directive here? And circle some of your action words so that you can put it into action. You might want to add it underneath your banner. Girls that are joining us online, let me catch you back up if this is your first week joining us. We are talking about Taking Back Your Life, and we are going to do two things. These four weeks, this is a little holiday mini master study, but it is not lightweight and it's not shallow. We're going to do two things in the next four weeks. We're going to learn to implement, to start a process, to put into place. We won't have accomplished these things in four weeks because this is going to be a lifetime of decisions we make. But we are definitely getting the ball moving, and we're getting unstuck from these stuff. So the two things we're doing is taking things back and thinking right. And the first lesson, we learned two action steps to fix your eyes and to strip off sin and weight. And today, we're adding a third action step, something that you can do, something that you can practice, something that you need to implement in your life so that you can take things back and think right. Does that make sense? You see how these are connected? This is the what we're doing. This is the how we're doing. So circle your action words, starting in verse six of Joshua, chapter one. I'm reading from the New Living Translation. The Bible says, "Be strong and courageous, for you will lead my people to possess all the land that I swore their ancestors." Be strong and very courageous. Don't want to stop there for just a second. Sometimes we can get so wrapped up in what we're doing, what we're trying to accomplish, what we're trying to produce, that oftentimes, the Lord's not interested in what we're doing. He's interested in what we are being, not doing, being. So He is saying to us, be, again, be strong and very courageous. Obey, there's your action word, all the laws that Moses gave you. So to bring that into today's term now, obey God's word. Obey God's word. Do not turn away from it, and you will be successful in everything you do. Girls, right here is the key to success in life, right now. How do you want to be successful in God's eyes? How do you want to be successful in life? How do you want to succeed in a difficult, hard time? You do just what it says. You be strong. You be courageous. You obey these laws. You do not turn from them. Verse eight, you need to circle this word, study. There's your action word. Study this book and the law continually. Meditate on it day and night so you may be sure to obey all that is written in it. Only then will you succeed. I command you to be strong and courageous. Do not be afraid or discouraged, for the Lord your God is with you wherever you go. Great keys, great action steps. You can add them under your banner. All right, flip over to chapter three, please. So the Lord is saying, here's what we're going to do. Moses, I mean, Joshua, here's what we're going to do. Moses is dead, and you're going to need to lead these people to study My word, to meditate on it. So please, no, those two words are different. They have different meanings. If we had time to unpack that in the original language, meditating means thinking. Well, well, that just so happens to be one of our action things, thinking, meditating. Not thinking that you're going crazy and not thinking that if it's not one thing, it's another. You're thinking the things that God's word has promised you and that God's word is speaking the truth of His word. That's what you're thinking about, not the lies of the enemy or not your own self that tells you how tired you are every day, who tells you you're never going to get over this or this is never going to change. So He was clear to Joshua, these are some foundational pillars we need to erect. And then, you're in chapter three, verse four. He gives a little more, well, I'm going to go back to verse one. So this is the first major thing that they're getting ready to do. Think of it in regards to that navigation printout that we would do. Here's the Lord saying, this is what I'm going to need you to do. Follow these ways early the next morning. What everybody say, early the next morning?
Early in the morning.
I personally think that's a key, early in the morning. Joshua called all the Israelites after they had arrived at the bank at the Jordan River, where they camped before crossing. Three days later, the Israelites leaders went through the camp, giving these instructions. Here's your navigation instructions right here. Here's your direction. Giving these instructions to the people. When you see the Levitical priest carrying the ark of the covenant of God, of the Lord your God, follow them. Here's your word, follow. Follow the directions. Follow what I'm saying to you. Follow what God's word said. Follow them. And then I love this part. Here's the men's restroom part. Since you have never been this way before. Another translation says, since you have never traveled this way, they will guide you. What will guide you? The directions that the Lord is giving in your life will guide you. This book is not only a love story to you, it gives you steps on what to do next. Here's one of the prayers that I pray regularly. When I am trying to follow direction, when I'm seeking guidance from the Lord, when I'm trying to determine what I need to do in this situation, here's what I say to the Lord. Lord, please reveal the next step I should take or should I wait. Lord, would you please reveal the next step that I should take or should I wait? Girls, that is a prayer He cannot resist to answer for you. When you draw near to Him, when you sit down with this book of directions open, and you're asking the Lord, you're seeking from the Lord, I need your help, Lord. I need wisdom. I want to follow your direction. Got to help me know what that is. What's the next step to take or should I wait? It's a prayer He cannot resist to answer. All right, so that's Joshua reminding us, be strong and courageous, study and meditate, then you will be successful. And He's adding, I'm giving you very specific instructions and directions. You need to follow them because you've not been this way before. You've not been through this crisis before. You've not had a son arrested before. You've not been diagnosed with cancer before. You've not been through COVID before. You've not lost a loved one before. You've not had a financial, we're in new places, and we will be till we take our last breath. We'll continue to be in different places that are unfamiliar territories for us. And I don't know about you, but I want to get that right. I don't want to keep going around the same mountain because I didn't follow the direction. I want to be awesome and seeing a sign, oh, this way, this so-and-so. And the Lord's like, I never told you to go that way. I spoke to you in the beginning, and then you thought you had it. You thought you knew exactly where this was going, but it wasn't going there at all. I was leading to a different place. We have to follow those directions. Now, flip over, please, to Isaiah. He going, oh, I don't know, he looks to the right. Let's find our other directives and following directions in Isaiah 42:16. Oh, I love this scripture. This is so helpful to me when I'm confused about what to do. This is usually a prayer that I will write out in my journal. This is the Lord saying that He is going to lead us. He does not lead us. Abide in Him. He told Joshua the same thing. Well, I've obeyed in you. I will be with you. This is New Living Translation. Isaiah 42:16. I will lead blind Israel down a new path, guiding them along an unfamiliar way. I will make the darkness bright before them and smooth out the rough road ahead of them. Yes, I will indeed do these things, and I will not forsake them. Girl, you can sleep at night knowing that He will guide you in this unfamiliar way, and He's going to make some rough paths, some rough roads. He's going to make them smooth, but we've got to be following the directions. So our application today, our third step is what?
Following directions.
So how are we doing with following directions? You might be saying, well, I don't know how to... Flip all that to the spiritual side, as you say. Well, just let His word speak. His word tells us, as far as giving us direction, you're like, I'm going to turn right or turn left or go east or go west, but I don't understand how to pull the direction out of here. Well, through His word, His word tells us, we're to let our light shine. We're to be faithful workers. We're to be courageous soldiers. We're to wait patiently. We're to help others. We are not to worry. We're to pray about everything. We are to be at peace. We are directed to guard our heart. He's giving us directions to build strong faith, to bear fruit, to be faithful, to be at peace. All of these are directions right out of His word. He tells us to devote yourself to prayer, to be wise, to know His word, to believe and not doubt, to give careful thought to your ways, to commit your ways to the Lord. How are we doing? Shall I go on with directions? All right, I will. We're to choose joy. We're to love others. We're to forgive people. We are directed to be alert, to be thankful, to confess our sins, and to build up and serve the body of Christ. We are told in God's word, directed to tell others why we have hope, to be ready to tell them that, to trust in the Lord, to do good, to delight in Him, to cast our cares on Him, to seek Him first, to press on, to don't quit, and to do all things without whining and complaining. How's that one working for you? Let me give you Isaiah 42:16 from the Message. I love this one. The Message translation talks to us in North Modern, today's language. Bible says this from the Message. I'll take the hand of those who don't know the way, who can't see where they're going. I'll be a personal guide to them, directing them through unfamiliar territory. I'll be right there to show them what road to take, make sure they don't fall into a ditch. These are the things that I'll be doing for them, sticking with them and not leaving them for a month. That's the Lord talking to you. I want to be your personal guide, but I need you to follow the direction. So we've got a long list of where we can start. Well, I'll write quickly, quickly, while you're in Isaiah. Turn over to Isaiah 50. This was a scripture that the Lord used in my life some time ago that really helped me in this area, not only following directions, but thinking that I know what's going next and where this is leading. I happened to be outside one evening. I love doing a fire pit. We've always had that at our homes or at our lake house, but we live in Flint, Texas, and we have a big fire pit. I love nothing more than putting on a flannel shirt and going to sit out in my chair and building a fire. And I don't like anybody else to do it. I like to do it. I build it a certain way, and I do a little thing because I'm very knowledgeable. They call me a pyromaniac, but I feel like I'm knowledgeable about my building the fire. So I did that a while back, built a great fire. I mean, it was blazing. Took my picture, sat down in the chair, enjoying my fire. And this is what came into my spirit in that moment from the Lord. This is what I love about Him. Listen, He talks to you all day. If you'll start with Him and His word and open up as best you can, as wide as you can, avenues of communication, He'll talk to you all day long, and you don't have to be sitting behind a desk in His word to continue the conversation. But you start the conversation with Him in the morning, and you open up, and then you just meditate and you think to Him, and you ask Him questions throughout the day, and that's how things continue to come in, even when you're sitting out by a fire. I wasn't doing a Bible study. At that moment, I wasn't thinking to the Lord at all. I was thinking, look at my awesome fire. I can always do that so good. And so, here's what came into my spirit, dropped right in. The Lord said this, don't walk by the light of your own fire. Don't walk by the light of your own fire, Miss Stewart. The wonderful little thing that you have created, that you were enjoying, not going to get you anywhere. I found it in Scripture. I knew it had to be in Scripture somewhere. I knew I had read that before. I knew what that thought was, and I found it. And it's right here in Isaiah, chapter 50, verse 10, says this. Who among you fears the Lord and obeys? There's our following direction. Obeys his servant. If you are walking in darkness, and some of you are, and maybe some of you at home today, you might be sitting at home alone, and you're just in a dark place in life right now, and you don't know what's going to happen next, and you don't even know what to do with it. The Lord says in Isaiah 50:10, if you are sitting in darkness without a ray of light, trust in the Lord. Circle your action words. Trust in the Lord and rely on your God. Here it is. Here it is. This was to Debbie Stewart that day. But watch out, you who live in your own light and warm yourself by your own fire. This is the reward that you will receive from it. You will lie down in great torment. I need you to think about what that means. What does the Bible mean? What does God mean? What is He saying when He is telling us? Watch out, you who live in your own light and warm yourself by your own fire. Any thoughts about that? Don't walk by the light of your own fire? Say again, Ms. Allen?
Don't follow your own direction.
There you go. Don't follow your own direction. Don't create. Don't create your own direction. Don't create your own fire. I like the way I did this. I like what it produced, and I'm enjoying it. This is what I like. The Lord's going, child, you better step away. You better step back. You are warming yourself by your own fire. And we as women, we know how to manipulate circumstances and create things to try to get the outcome that we desire. We are, we are pro, professionals in that area. We will figure out a way to try to make it happen, the way that we would like to see it happen. The outcome that we desire. You will mess up your life if you don't stop that. Ask me, Helen.
Our fire is temporary as well.
Absolutely. That fire's going out in a very short period. And guess what? I'm going to be in the dark again. I'm going to be sitting, until I stir it up again and try to create and make something happen again. And the Lord's like, if you will follow my great, when you have no light, I will be your light. You don't have to create your own light. I will be your God. I will be your light when you're in a dark place. And the sweet thing is, he's your light, he's your light when you're in a bright place. Both of those, but he's reinterrogating. Don't try to do some, don't follow your own directions. Don't create your own list of what you should do next. I'm going to need you to sit back and let me light the way and you follow me. That's going to require some adjustments on our parts. That's going to require some new activity, some new ways of thinking, some new habits that we need to develop. And as you move forward in this pilgrimage of taking things back and thinking right, I assure you, uh, your emotions will argue with you every step of the way because we've been acting a certain way for years now. It's been modeled for us perhaps for generations, it has in my life. My emotions, our emotions will argue with you, your pride will fight you. Your heart will lie to you, the Bible says your heart is deceitfully wicked. Who can know it? That's why I'm following his directions. Your eyes will deceive you. You, you, you will tell yourself, this is what you see. But what you see is not all there is to see. That's why in the dark, he promises to be the light. Your mind will work out a thousand different scenarios. But the Bible says in Isaiah thirty, twenty-one, of your ears will hear a voice behind you saying, walk you this way. This is the way walking in. You've got to listen to your spirituals and your Lord speaking into your heart, giving you directions. Let me close with this, our time is gone, I wish we had more time to just unpack this a little more. I hope you'll leave comments if you have questions or, girls online, let us know how we can pray for you. We feel very connected to you. But I came across this point and I kind of described some of our difficulties in following these directions. When things go wrong, as they sometime will, when the road you're traveling seems all uphill, when cares are pressing you down a bit, rest if you must, but don't you quit. Often the goal is nearer than it seems to the faint and faltering soul. In pain, the traveler has given up. When you might have captured the victor's cup, you can persevere if you will never give up. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for your presence in here today, I sense you're stirring up. Thank you for the movement of the Holy Spirit in this room and online as well. And Lord, I pray that this isn't just a lesson we're putting down on paper, just fleeting thoughts through our mind. We have agreed with our head nods and with our noting, we have agreed with the truth that you have given to us today, that you've instructed us. And we commit, and I'm committing as the leader of this women's ministry over these rooms, we will follow your direction. And I pray, Lord, that you would point out very quickly, when we have walked by the light of our own fire, when we're trying to set up our own directions or we put the directions aside because we think we know where we're going, I pray that you will bring that to our attention immediately, will confess that immediately. Get right back in line with the directions you have for our life. We sure love you and I pray, Lord, that our lives would demonstrate that and model that to others. In your name I pray and all the girls say.
Amen.
Amen. All right, we've got about thirty minutes.